Good evening and welcome to the first session of the City Council of Lake Forest, May 5, 2025. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Tack.
Here.
Alderman Novitz.
Here.
Alderman Clements.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Powers.
Here.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Here.
Alderman Levert.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Alderman Walther.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Very good. Please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's not me. All right. We will begin with comments by Mayor, and because I will have comments later, we'll just bypass this for now. Next item is comments by City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. Good evening. I have two items under my report. The first one included on your omnibus agenda for this evening is a contract award to resurface a portion of the McLory bike path, and I wanted to highlight it for several reasons. One, it's just the latest example of our Public Works Department doing a tremendous job in obtaining grant funding to help accelerate construction of some of these projects. I believe it's a 50-50 split, maybe. I'll let Byron speak to that. But it's also a project that I think furthers a lot of goals that were both identified in the strategic plan and certainly from feedback we heard from the public in our community survey. And so here to provide a brief update about the project and to talk about the timeline moving forward is our Superintendent of Engineering, Byron Coogan.
Very well said. Thank you, Manager Wishe. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. So to go over the update a little bit more for this, so we did have a community survey back in 2023. I think most of us remember that. There was a lot of interest from the community regarding pedestrian paths and bike paths. So last year, we went ahead and resurfaced part of the McLory bike path just north of here using local funding. That was from Illinois to Wesley. And then this project that we're talking about today is from Wesley to Old Elm. So this stretch has deteriorated as well. It's also narrow, meaning eight feet. We are looking to widen it to 10 feet, somewhere that we did with the other stretch as well. Back in, I think it was actually about a year ago now, April of last year, we heard about an IDNR grant that is focused on bike paths. We went ahead and applied for that. I have to give a shout out to an engineer from our office. He's not here right now, but Alex Kenzer. He actually just started with us a year ago, and I basically threw him right into the grant writing, and he probably spent 30 to 40 hours putting it together, but he obviously did a good job because as past October, we heard that we did get award of what we asked for. So in the budget, as a reminder, we have $450,000. So this is simply the budget of what we thought it may cost. $450,000, and we included that 50-50 grant up to, not to exceed amount of $200,000. So basically what that means is they'll pay 50-50 until $200,000, then it becomes fully a local cost. And then we budgeted $250,000 as well. When you look at the chart below that, you'll see that the bids came in quite a bit lower than that, which is great. We have been seeing some better bid prices this past year, so very fortunate to see that. So received four bids. The lowest bid was from Manivale Construction, which was actually the contractor last year, who did a very good job, for a total amount of $236,000. So quite a bit under the budget amount. In terms of utilizing the budget, we would only be able to utilize 50% of it. So if you look at your council write-up with contingency, I believe it's $260,000. That would be basically a 50-50 split where we would pay 50%, they would pay 50%. Just a reminder about this grant, and this will be a little bit different than the IDOT grant that I talked about later tonight. With this grant, we actually pay it fully upfront. So that full cash flow will go through our finances, and then through quarterly reports, we'll be able to actually send an invoice to IDNR to get reimbursed. So back to the 50-50 split with the costing with contingency up to $260,000, that would be potentially $130,000 local once we get reimbursed, and then $130,000 IDNR. From a construction standpoint, we're looking to do it in a three-week window. We're trying to minimize the disturbance to the community, knowing that there is a lot of people that use it in the summer, but the summer is the best time to do that type of work. So we're looking to start it right after the Fourth of July, around July 7, and then wrap it up just before Lake Forest Day. And then in terms of detour, we wanted to be very transparent with the detour route. Like I said, knowing so many people use it, especially in the summer. So the red and white would be the actual path. That'll be closed. That's under construction. And then just starting from the north, kind of where you see, there's kind of a couple of different directions going on there, but starting at Wesley, basically, the bikes and pedestrians would go south on Sheridan to Wesley, and then they would go west on the sidewalk. At that location, we're not recommending any bikes or pedestrians going on the street. So we'll have it specifically signed for them to use that sidewalk under that viaduct for the duration of this project. And then going east, they would basically go to Beverly and cross the road there, and then they would be in those residential neighborhood for most of the detour until they get back down to Old Elm. At Old Elm, the bikes would use the roadway because it's actually marked that way with pavement markings, and then the pedestrians would use the sidewalk. There is a lot of other construction in the neighborhood, in this specific neighborhood, so we will keep an eye on that. And if there are any conflicts with the detour route going through an area that's being paved, we would adjust as needed. But at this point, we do believe that the schedules are aligned in a way that they would not be overlapping. And then lastly, this is similar to the construction signage that we had last year, but this is just kind of an example of the signage that would be out on the project as well as just the notifications in general, just celebrating the project and letting everyone know that we heard them and that we are upgrading the section, reminding them it'll be about three weeks, and then there's a QR code for more information. So with that, I can take any questions.
Great. If there are no questions, I'll have Byron stay right there to provide our regular monthly update on the Deer Pass Streetscape project. There's a lot of activity planned for the coming month, and I'm going to ask Byron to share that with the council and the community.
That's correct. Thank you. We're going to jump right into the construction recap video, if I can get it to play properly. I'll narrate a little bit as it goes. So most of the work the last month was Mead, who is a gas contractor from North Shore Gas, replacing their gas main in anticipation of our Streetscape project. And then now this is some of the restoration work, doing some concrete. Some of this is temporary. We realize that some of this will be removed and replaced as part of the Streetscape project, but for safety reasons, we did have to replace some of it with concrete temporarily. And then this is actually the subcontractor for the Streetscape project, who started last week doing saw cutting for sidewalk removals. All right. I'm going to try to get back to the slides. Oh. I got it. One second. We talked about this today. Didn't want this to happen, but, all right, there we go. We're back. All right. So in terms of recent work completed, North Shore Gas, like I just said, they completed their work over the last month. The real big news, which was last week, I believe it was Monday of last week, was IDOT executed the construction agreement. They had awarded it a few weeks before that, but really, we couldn't do any work until they executed that. So that was a good day. All of last week, the project team, meaning all of us internally, and then also Thomas Engineering, who's helping us, have been kind of rushing around, doing all of the other IDOT paperwork, getting ready for the work that a little bit started last week, and then a lot of it will start this week. Sidewalk cutting began, as I mentioned before, and then mobilization of equipment. I believe more manholes and some other equipment arrived today as well. And then in that one picture, you'll see, the top picture, you'll see a lot of guys in yellow pouring concrete. You'll see one guy in red. That one guy in red, we basically hired someone to clean all the windows after the water main project, just as a nice gesture to the businesses that were so patient. So we just did that at the end of that project, which they appreciated. And then now looking at more of a schedule overview of where we're at. So the gray, as you know, the water main project is complete, very successful project on schedule. Now we're focusing on all the schedule that's in the orange. So the road closure will begin tomorrow. That's what I'm being told. And that closure is from just east of Oakwood to just west of Western. And in order to do that, part of Bank Lane to the south, where it says two-way traffic, has to be restripped because you know right now it's one-way southbound, but once Deer Path is closed, cars would not be able to access it. So they basically had to sync up the restriping of that road with the closure, which was actually the reason they didn't do it today. With some of the rain earlier in the day, they didn't want to do those pavement markings. So that's still on schedule for tomorrow as far as I know. In terms of Bank Lane to the north, that's a future project, which we're looking at tentatively starting in June. Right now, it wouldn't be fully closed, but there won't be access to it from the south. So it will be cut off from the south. And then in terms of the intersections, so Oakwood will still be open, Western will still be open, but both of them are part of the Streetscape project. And eventually, each will have about two weeks where they'll be closed in order to basically remove and replace all the crosswalks in that area. And then, as I mentioned, the last bullet point, I mentioned that earlier, Bank Lane, which we discussed today with the Public Works Committee, will be looking to bring that to City Council at the next meeting. Going into a couple more items of work the next two weeks. So I know we meet every month for these updates. The contractor looks at it more of a two-week look ahead. So I mentioned the schedule. Later this week, there'll be cutting the sidewalk on the south side of the sidewalk. So I think people noticed last week, they kind of cut a line on the north side of the sidewalk about halfway. They're going to be doing that same thing on the south side probably tomorrow or the next day. And what they're trying to do is they're basically cutting in that line so that they can remove the sidewalk on the parkway on both sides. So they'll remove that in preparation of future work while still leaving the existing concrete sidewalk next to the buildings. That'll be used for pedestrian access at the moment. Tree removals will occur in the next week or two, as well as electric work for the future lighting as well. And then for some general updates, this is more communication-related and logistics. The project team, including myself, attended the chamber meeting a week or two ago. We are continuing to monitor detours and traffic signals on a daily basis. We've been walking the corridor frequently. I know earlier today Bernard walked Bank Lane to the south, knocked on every door, just to remind them that, you know, the restriping was going to take place tomorrow. And then, yeah, just the communication will continue in general. One new item here is field office hour. So you may not realize it, but it is fairly common on IDOT projects that have consultants that there will be a field office. So the consultant has a field office. I believe it is at 600 Northwestern. It's basically at the at-property buildings. I believe there's a stairwell, stairway going down outside. So they're in the basement there, and we're actually looking at doing office hours. Where basically they'll have an engineer there, like from 1:00 to 2:00 every Thursday. So if anyone wants to come in during that time, it'll be a standing meeting. So we'll be advertising that more going forward. And then we've been tying in Bank Lane enhancements with the Streetscape updates the last few months. So big announcement, the design is complete. We did it in a very short timeframe, a few months, but it was a very successful design. It actually, the bid opening, I believe, was last week. We received, yeah, three bids, well, I guess April 15. We presented those to the Public Works Committee, actually earlier today, received some initial direction, and we will be bringing that back to City Council on May 19 with a tentative start date of June 9 through October 31. And then with that, I can take any questions.
Are there any questions for Byron? Alderman Weber.
Thank you so much for that detailed presentation. My question is regarding Bank, when Bank Lane, I should say, starting tomorrow, once cars are unable to turn north on Bank Lane, how are the deliveries being handled for things like Walgreens and garbage to the Arcade Building? Just curious on that.
Yeah. No, that's a good question. So we've been working with Walgreens. So we started all the communication for the Streetscape project probably back in October, the October. So we've been working on it a while, and we've been coordinating with the manager at Walgreens since then. Most of their trucks actually go on Western. It's really just the Walgreens truck, which is once a week that goes in that back alley. The manager has been working with corporate Walgreens to just change the delivery time or the type of truck, but they have agreed to load in the front off of Western.
Good. And the other businesses as well, they're all going to just load from Market Square then, or?
Yeah. I mean, for the most part, it's Walgreens that's using that. But I mean, yeah, we've been, I mean, we will have alternate locations. It wasn't shown on the map today, but we are looking at having a loading zone on Oakwood, just north of Deer Path as well. So we can adjust that and accommodate that. We certainly would.
Thank you. So just to follow up on that. So the...
Or Forest, rather, not Oakwood.
Yeah, okay. So the clothing, like I'm thinking about Talbot's and Jay McGlaughlin and the other businesses that are on Market Square.
Mm-hmm.
They would, Talbot's used to load off of Bank Lane. The delivery trucks would come to that no parking area. So where are they going to have to go now?
Yeah. So, I mean, right, so here's the thing about Bank Lane is that, like, you won't be able to access it from the south, but technically, it'll still be open. So like if someone is able to back in from the north, they would still be able to do that. But we'll certainly check back with businesses and see if we need to adjust anything or temporarily stripe another area.
They're aware of all this, right?
Yeah. But we will go back around.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
All right. The next item is opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Are there any people present who would like to address the council on items that aren't on the agenda? Okay. Please come on up, state your name and address.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Rami Lopat, and I live at 410 East Woodland Road in Lake Forest. At your last meeting, you presented a lot of information about the 2026 budget, and I was listening on Zoom. There was a lot to take in. So I'm here on two things. One is to ask for your clarification. I'm not sure I understood. The city showed a surplus of $3.6 million, and I think I heard that it was going to be used somehow for the turf fields. Can you explain exactly how it will be used and whether it's going to be used to defuse the bonds? I thought that the turf fields were going to, those bonds would be diffused by the fees and the tournament, the team sports fees and the tournament fees. So that's a clarification. And the other thing that I would appreciate knowing about is we have the general fund, which comes, half of it comes from property taxes, and the other half, as I understand it, comes from all the fees that we collect, you know, sales tax, fees on services, utility taxes, building permit revenues. And so the general fund often builds up a surplus, and then you transfer it for various purposes, like the Parks Fund or the Housing Fund, Self-Insurance Fund, capital improvements, right? Am I on track here? Yes? Okay. So my question is, have you had a discussion on whether some, at least, or even all, of that surplus should be returned to the taxpayers? And if you've had that discussion, I'm really eager to be referred to whatever meeting you discussed it at. But that's my question. Have you ever had that discussion about taxing us? Thank you very much. I look forward to your answers.
Okay. So as to how we allocate surpluses, I'm going to give that to you. I would normally give it to our finance director, but I think she's been here for five minutes, so maybe.
Sure. I'm happy to address both questions if you'd like. Maybe speaking to the first one about use of FY25 surplus. While no final decision has been made by the City Council, the conversations to date have been suggestive of using that surplus to help finance construction of the police station project, not the turf field. The turf fields at this point have resources and revenues allocated for the annual debt service payments. We've had, and that's been secured largely through property taxes. There's been conversations at prior meetings about utilizing rental revenues to accumulate in a replacement fund over an extended period of time to cover the costs of future replacement. To the second question about surplus and rebating it to the taxpayers, ultimately, that's a policy decision for the City Council to consider. The city's practices, practice over the last several years has been to utilize surpluses that materialize if and when revenues exceed forecasts. We are very conservative in our revenue forecasting, utilizing those funds for one-time expenses. So we don't utilize it to pay recurring expenses, but Ms. Lopat acknowledged and referenced a transfer into the Affordable Housing Fund. That's been done on occasion. Infusions into the Public Safety Pension Funds has occurred, as well as significant transfers into the Capital Improvement Fund. So ultimately, it's up to the council to consider how to best utilize those resources. I think I would note that a decision not to transfer those funds into the Capital Improvement Fund, if it's rebated back to the taxpayers or used for other means, ultimately just defers and delays capital improvements within the community. And so there's always a balance there of wanting to be, I think, responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars without unnecessarily deferring long-term capital obligations. But again, that's a future conversation the council will have.
And I'd just like to add on to that, that actually, in my perspective, by doing what the City Manager just described, we are in fact returning the money to taxpayers. We're, you know, we're not having parties. We're funding, you know, category-one capital improvement projects that weren't funded. And when money becomes available, we can add into that, and those are projects that will be done frequently in the next fiscal year. So, I mean, if the idea is, at the end of the year, you send out checks, we haven't really had discussions about that. We typically have discussions about where can that money be allocated to offset future payments for projects that are already scheduled. Does anybody else have comments or response to that? Alderman Weber.
I was going to echo Manager Wishe's comments about how the money's allocated, but also, if memory serves me correct, going back in time, the discussion about reimbursing, where do we have this excess? What do we do? May have been prior to Mayor Tack, but we discussed it at budget workshop meetings that I recall.
It certainly has come up. It's just never been an idea that there has been a lot of discussion of actually sending money back.
Yeah.
Reducing future tax levies, yes. I mean, that's in part what it does.
Can I make a point of order? This is public comment, not Q and A.
Yeah. It's a fair point. Thank you. My fault.
And I think it's a very important issue to be addressed, but I think if we're going to maintain some decorum here, and a few mayors ago, particularly on a council that you sat on, Mayor, it became Q and A, and I think you lose control over the body. So just my part, part of my parting words. But very good questions, and I think they're appropriate to be levied, but I don't think this point in the agenda is the appropriate time, if at least we're adhering to Robert's rules, so.
Are there any other comments on non-agenda items? Sure. Come on up and state your name and address.
Hello, everybody. I'm Art Mertes. My address is 450 Washington Road in Lake Forest. I've been a resident of Lake Forest since 2019, and first off, I want to thank each of you for your service. I respect each of you for devoting your time for the betterment of the City of Lake Forest. So these views that I am going to express here are in no way a critique of any of you individually. I'm here to provide some input about the proposal to dissolve the City of Lake Forest Legal Committee. I've been serving on the legal committee with my first meeting in August of 2022. I'm a corporate attorney. I also represent clients in commercial disputes and litigation. I have a law degree, but I also hold an MBA and an engineering background. And I came through the caucus interview process. I was asked to serve. I did not seek to serve. In fact, I didn't really know what the caucus was when I was asked to serve, or at least to put my name in for consideration. But I was willing to serve, not for selfish reasons, but for some of the reasons that we moved here to Lake Forest. And quite frankly, I would probably prefer not to have to share my views in this public forum, but I recognize that that's the process that is before us, and this is the forum. And I believe it's my civic duty to share these views that I will share here. My fellow committee persons, Joy Guskott-Mueller, Paul Sundberg, and David Michael, they have been in some longstanding service to the legal committee in accordance with the term limits, and are all talented, successful attorney-citizens in private practice or in-house counsel. They learned of this proposal to dissolve the legal committee through community members and not through other ways, and it was sometime after the April 21 first reading. It was a surprise to them. It wasn't a surprise to me because I had been informed, and I believed it was a foregone conclusion, but we had a lot of discussion that ensued since, not as a group, but through our chairperson. And she's reviewed the recordings of the April 21 meeting because she was not here. I've reviewed the recordings as well. And I respect the views that have been expressed about time and perhaps redundancy, or views that maybe there isn't an availability of meaningful work. But I'm here to tell you that I don't think that those are really issues that carry the day on the motion. And I want to share some more about the background of the legal committee in brief, and the views of the committee persons that serve on it about the value that we believe it adds to the process of governance.
Excuse me. Can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yes.
I should have said this to you upfront, but generally, there's a three-minute limit to this, so.
I'm sorry. I was...
And I'm not going to hold you to it strictly, but what I am asking is that maybe you sort of don't take this on to 10 minutes.
Sure, sure. My pleasure. So what we're asking for, and what I'm asking for, is that the motion to dissolve the legal committee and to amend the ordinance be removed from the omnibus agenda for discussion, and at the second reading of the ordinance, I'm asking you to please vote no to the proposed revisions regarding dissolution of the legal committee. I will explain further, and I will work to be brief. There are a few things important to clarify. Number one, no committee person of the legal committee supports dissolving it, even though two of them have terms that will expire very soon. All committee persons are volunteers, as I said. Each of them considers their time and work on the committee to be valuable and meaningful, and they've confirmed to the chairman they are willing to serve to the end of their respective terms. The value of the legal committee to the city was part of a carefully considered and designed oversight system developed by past City Council members around 2005 to help manage legal matters and issues that confront the city. From what Chairman Guskott-Mueller has shared with me, the City Council at that time was seeking to prevent recurrence of costly, time-consuming legal disputes by engaging a small advisory committee comprised of citizen attorneys working alongside with staff, outside counsel, a City Council liaison, and the mayor to review and monitor legal claims filed against the city, receive updates from outside counsel related to litigation management, and review the legal budget components of the city's overall budget. The committee does not review legal bills. From my point of view, the legal committee is a useful check and balance in the governance framework of Lake Forest. framework of Lake Forest. It leverages volunteer unpaid talent that are attorney residents. I don't believe there will be a shortage. The legal committee is advisory in nature. It does not act as the city's legal counsel. It does add rigor and inquiry to the process of managing the city's legal affairs. It's a level of legal, of rigor and inquiry that probably doesn't happen through oversight by non-lawyers. That is something I fear is capable of easily being overlooked or lost without the formal committee structure. And I think it goes, is worthy of acknowledging, that there are different types of leaders. Some have great legal acumen, some couldn't care less about the legal, and some view it as boring and mundane. And that's okay. The fact of the matter is, each set of leadership has different needs. And we're not talking about just views of how this group feels in their leadership capacities, about their capacity to oversee legal, which I think there's an important aspect, that there has been no alternate proposal accompanying the motion to dissolve the legal committee for how this all would be overseen and monitored. And so, the point is really that there is a change in the guard. And with that change in the guard, there are differences in needs for how they might see the value of the legal committee. Reports that are prepared, we do not view as, as extra work, because those are reports that should be done anyway. And even though there's a light legal docket, I true, I commented about that in my interview. I thought the legal docket was fairly light. But that's not a reason to dissolve the committee. And the view of the committee is that the governance is working, and the committee is a part of that. To take it away, you're asking, okay, what will happen if we take it away? Maybe it will be okay, or maybe it won't. The fact that, that certain claims are covered by Irma, the insurance provider, isn't a reason to abandon the committee. Rates are a function in no small part of claims and payouts. So, some view, unfortunately, the proposal is one for diminishing or avoiding oversight, rather than based on unnecessary waste of time or redundancy. I don't want the city, people in the city, I should say, to view that the city government is working not in their interests, or in a way to not give the transparency and involvement to the city that I believe has helped make our governance structure top-notch. And I do believe that if it's going to be considered, that it really warrants a lot more examination and feedback from the community. You know, I did speak with another caucus, the former caucus exec, and there was not a view that there would be a shortage of attorneys to serve on the committee. So, all this is said with respect for the excellent work that each of you are doing. Thank you for this time to have said my views.
Thank you very much. Are there other comments on non-agenda items?
Susan Garrett, 51 Pembroke Drive. I'm here to speak about the legal committee as well. On April 21st, I was informed that the city council was planning on disbanding the legal committee. In fact, the city council voted unanimously in a recent first reading to disband the legal committee and the Parks and Rec Board, with a final vote to take place in two weeks, which is tonight. Once I received this information, I decided to double-check with the chair of the legal committee to make sure she and her fellow members were on board with dissolving this important oversight committee. When I called her, she was taken aback by my news. She was totally unaware. In fact, she stated that no one called her to get her input prior to the first reading of this proposal, or to follow up after to let her know the outcome. On Friday, April 25th, I received the weekly E News email from the city, and under the heading "Things to Know," there was the explanation for dissolving the legal committee, as well as the Parks and Rec Board. And I quote, "As day-to-day operations have evolved, and council engagement has increased through dedicated subcommittees, the role of the advisory committees has become less distinct." And then it goes on to say something along the line of "legal matters would remain under the guidance of the city attorney." So, in essence, without prior notice or input from the members of the longstanding legal committee, which has been in place for decades, the committee is on the verge of being dissolved in a timeframe of 14 days, with all matters referred to the city attorney. My question here is, is the city attorney in a position to provide oversight on all legal issues in addition to handling the ongoing legal matters of the city? As our Lake Forest citizens place a high value on government oversight and transparency, I urge you to reconsider this proposal. While the city attorney is certainly qualified to handle legal matters in Lake Forest, having much-needed oversight from the legal committee members, all of which are skilled and experienced attorneys and residents, is an extraordinary benefit to all of our residents. Having an essential layer of oversight and free legal advice by a vetted citizen committee who only have the best interests in mind for Lake Forest will continue to add value to our community. I urge you once again to reconsider your proposal to dissolve the legal committee and the essential oversight work they do on behalf of all Lake Foresters.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on non-agenda items? Excuse me, Rami, you've already addressed us.
That's a different agenda item.
First off, this is for non-agenda items?
Well, Mr. Mayor, could I get clarification of that? I saw that the market's intent, that's kind of dissolving of the committees, it was in the omnibus agenda.
Yeah? No, but we haven't had that discussion yet. Before we do any omnibus item, we ask if there's any items that would like to be pulled out, okay? And if they are, then we do that and we discuss them, and then there's public comment on those if we are voting on them individually. So, that's on the agenda. You're aware of it, because it's on the agenda. So, if you'd like to discuss it or ask a question at that time, you may do so.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. Okay, and this will be from the Public Works Committee, and we will be discussing consideration to approve agreements and contingencies for the Deerpath Streetscape project as follows. A, approval of temporary traffic signal services to John Thomas Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed $52,200. And B, approval of a construction contingency in the amount of $150,000 for invoices to the State of Illinois Department of Transportation. And C, approval of a construction contingency and miscellaneous services related to the project in the amount of $150,000 to Dland Construction LLC. This will be presented by Byron Kootz, Superintendent of Engineering.
All right, good evening again. I wanted to provide some more background on this item before you vote on it. So, this is in regards to the contingency request and then the traffic signal extension. So, for a little bit of background, I guess two things I want to bring up real quick. So, just want to real quick explain or remind how the IDOT grants work. It actually is the reverse of what I was saying earlier about the IDNR grants. IDOT will actually pay the project completely, and then they'll re, or they'll invoice us, and we'll pay them back for our share. So, as I kind of run through the math, I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. And then, I just thought it would be a good idea to kind of go through the budget summary, show you where we're currently at, funding-wise, before voting on those items. So, the original budget was 4.4 million. That's what was in our capital plan in between fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26. Of that 4.4 million, we received an ITEP grant of 2.068 million, and then the remaining amount was local funding of about 2.33 million. The project was on the March IDOT bidding, and the low bidder for that was Dland Construction in the amount of 2.99 million. Now, looking at their bid a little bit closer, the first step you have to do is, looking at the 2.99 million, with an ITEP grant, you have to figure out how much of that cost is considered an eligible cost, meaning how much of that can you actually run through the 80-20 grant? There are items that aren't eligible, so you have to kind of pull those out. So, eligible items for an ITEP grant would be basically safety items, so like the bumpouts, pedestrian features, so like the aesthetic features, the pavers, and then like landscape-related items. So, doing an analysis on that, of the 2.99 million-dollar bid, about 2.356 million of it is considered an eligible cost. So, now, we ran the 80-20 split through that eligible cost, which basically gave us an amount of a federal fund amount of 1.88 million, and then a local match, the 20% of 471,000. So, that's the federal funding portion, so it's in bold there. It's 1.885 million of the 2.068 million that we have. That being said, there could be change orders that come up during the project, and for eligible costs, those change orders would be run basically through that 80-20 split. So, there would be an opportunity to potentially utilize more of the grant, but of course, like, we don't necessarily want change orders if we have to avoid it, or if we can avoid it. In terms of local funding, which is the next bullet point down, the local funding is basically the match, which I just showed you the math on the previous step. So, the match would be the 471,000 plus the ineligible costs, which are 660,000, so that adds up to 1.1 million. So, as a project currently sits, as it was bid, the local funding looks like that would be needed, looks like it would be about 1.1 million of the 2.33 million that was budgeted. So, now, looking into the specific items that are being requested a little bit further. So, there's three total items. Two of them are contingency items. IDOT agreements do not include local contingency above the award amount. So, if you remember in the fall, whenever there was a council item for your approval, basically, we had to pre-approve the IDOT agreements before getting onto their letting. That was basically, the way that works is they basically get the cost estimate at that time, and basically, all the math is built around that. But we all know the bids come in differently, and IDOT just does not put contingency on top of that. They basically look at it as if you could build the project for exactly how it was bid out. Projects just generally don't work that way. So, our standard practice, the city's standard practice for our own local projects, those are locally funded, is to add in a 10% contingency. So, that's just consistent with, with those practices. So, in this case, a 10% contingency would be 300,000. And we're doing, or we're proposing something a little bit different in this case, where we are looking to split that contingency 50-50 between IDOT. So, if you remember in the beginning, when I kind of talked about, just a reminder about how the IDOT projects work, at some point, they'll start invoicing us. We'll probably get an invoice like a month or two in, and then it'll probably go on for two to three years. I've seen some IDOT projects that municipalities are getting bills five to 10 years in, depending on the type of project. So, 50% of this, we're looking to be payable to IDOT. So, if there is some change order, and it increases that, you know, that base amount, we're basically getting your authority tonight to be able to pay those bills when they come in. And it may come in in six months, it may come in in a year. It probably will be a year or two, though, by the time we actually get to the point where we're actually potentially exceeding any base budget amount. And then the other 50%, we're proposing to have it payable directly to Dland. So, still overall, a 10% contingency, we're just basically splitting it up 5% to IDOT, 5% to Dland. And the reason we're proposing to have some of it payable directly to Dland is there are items that would be ineligible costs anyways, and you would typically still run those through the IDOT project, even though you're not getting any grant funding. But the amount of paperwork and the time in order to do that would take a little bit longer if we were able to just pay them directly for any of those. There's also just some items in general. Let's say there's just some kind of communication effort, or some kind of miscellaneous service that we want to do. Some of those, IDOT just will not participate in that. So, it gives us a little bit of flexibility to go to Dland directly if there is something during the project that comes up that we need to be able to act on. As you know, the contingency are for unforeseen items, scope changes. Any contingency that is not used remains in the capital fund. So, now I've kind of touched on the two contingency items. For the third item, which is the temporary signal at Westminster in Green Bay, so that's been there since January, as I believe you have all seen it. In the very beginning, it was actually a little bit rough. The first couple of weeks, it took a lot of effort from the traffic signal company and internally with our streets department as well, to kind of get it set up. There was just a little bit of a learning curve with that. It's been really good since, but the reason I'm here tonight is because that contract expires. It actually expires like in the next week. The way we were paying for it previously is we were paying, it, we were basically paying Campanella, who was a water main contractor, and they were paying a sub. You may ask, why did we not just include it with the Streetscape project that is starting? Because what we're trying to do tonight is we're basically trying to extend it from now through October, so basically through the duration of the Streetscape project. So, during design with IDOT, there is a very thorough review by IDOT, and they have some items that they don't think is germane to a project like this. So, they pushed back on this temporary signal just due to the fact that it's not on one of our official detour routes, which, which it isn't, but we still find it necessary to help traffic flow in that area. So, that's the reason why we simply didn't include it on the Streetscape project, is because they did not allow that to happen. As I mentioned, it was previously paid by the water main contractor. So, when we were looking at this the last couple of weeks, or maybe month, we did seek a few quotes. So, John Thomas is actually the owner of the current equipment that's out there right now, but they're basically getting paid through Campanella. So, we basically got a cost from John Thomas, and we got a quote from two others as well. That being said, the cheapest cost was basically going directly to the signal owner, John Thomas, whose equipment it is anyways. And the benefit of going with them is that their equipment is already out there. There's no disruption to service. If we were to basically swap and go with a different traffic signal company, we, it would be new equipment. All of a sudden, this equipment gets pulled, new equipment comes in, and we would go back through some version of that first and second week in January. We would have to tweak all the sensors and get that all set up. And then on the right, you'll see the three items that were mentioned earlier for your action, and with that, I can take any questions.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Koots? I have a, just sort of a general observational question. Seems to me that over the last two years, our budget has been routinely significantly exceeding our bids for, for projects. I mean, this is perhaps the largest example where budget is almost a million dollars more than, than the bid. And so, my question is, do we need to rethink how we're doing this? Because it strikes me that running large surpluses because our budgets just aren't realistic relative to bids is, is not a great strategy going forward. And it leads to questions like I got tonight about, you know, surpluses, and shouldn't we be giving money back to people?
Yep. So, I mean, a year or two ago, most of our bids were exceeding the budget. I would say like nine out of 10.
That when Alder, or Mayor Pandeleon was here?
The last couple of years. I would say this year, at least in my opinion, is the first year where, like, we've been consistently like within budget. I mean, some of that certainly is, we've been spending a lot of effort making sure our budget numbers are accurate. That being said, it does seem like there's a lot of competitiveness that is out there right now. You know, there was a lot of COVID grants that had been dropping off the last year or two. So, basically, that's been diluting the market for contractors because of all that extra spending. A lot of those are dropping off, so there's some speculation that that may be involved. But I would say, looking at the Dland price, and we are confident that they can do the work, they were quite a bit lower than the other two bids, and the second and third bid was actually pretty close to what we had budgeted. So, I think we just caught them at a point early in the season where they were looking to basically get some work on a big project, and they went in pretty competitively.
Okay. I have a comment, though.
I have a comment, though, and you'll be happy to see me go, Mayor. I disagree with you because on Lake Woodbine, it was a complete opposite, where we had budgeted X amount, and that was with IDOT in hand with the bridge grant, and we got a bid in that was double. So I think these are really project-by-project bases. So, and I agree that there seems to be a little bit of disjointedness, but we've come off a major economic turmoil with COVID. So I would expect that, you know, supply and demand, contractors being more competitive over the, your next two years, I think there will be more consistency to it. So I agree but disagree, because it does work in both directions. So, and we were fortunate enough to get another grant from the state to make up that difference, but I don't think that's a uniform, consistent assessment of our budgeting process. So those are just my thoughts. We were off by a million and a half on that bridge.
It was about 1.3 million.
That's a lot.
Other comments or questions? Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Is there anybody in the public who would like to make comment on this agenda item? All right, hearing none, so then we are going to ask for a motion to approve the agreements and contingencies for the Deerpath Streetscape project as follows. A, approval of temporary traffic signal services to John Thomas Incorporated and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed $52,200, and B, approval of a construction contingency in the amount of $150,000 for invoices to the State of Illinois Department of Transportation, and C, approval of a construction contingency and miscellaneous services related to the project in the amount of $150,000 to Deland Construction LLC. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Very good, thank you. The next agenda item is items for omnibus vote consideration. So we are going to pull out for discussion items four and five. These would be consideration of ordinances amending the City of Lake Forest Code Sections 97.020, 97.021, and 97.022 pertaining to the Park and Recreation Board Section 32.095 pertaining to the legal committee, and consideration, oh, yes, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 39 of the City Code of Ordinances regarding municipal grocery taxes with the adoption of a 1% grocery tax effective January 1, 2026. Both of these are final readings. So at this time, are there any other agenda items that Alderman would like removed or taken separately before I read through the items? If you don't know, and you want to revisit this, we'll do so after I finish reading the items.
Can we separate item four? Because there are two actions that are there for legal committee and Parks and Recreation Board.
Yes, if, once you pull it, then you can separate it. There are two different ordinances.
There's certainly two different votes. The conversation is really the same conversation. It's because the rationale is the same for both. Do we have to have separate discussions for each one, or can we discuss them in lump and vote on them individually?
Yes, you can.
Okay, that's what we'll do then. All right. Item one, approval of the April 7, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the April 21, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Item three, approval of the check register for the period of March 22 through April 19, 2025. Item six, approval of a Public Works Committee recommendation to award a bid extension to Midwest Power Industries Incorporated for a one-year generator maintenance contract in the amount of $26,925. Item seven, approval of design engineering services for the Cherokee Road Storm Suwer Improvements Project to Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $59,876 to include a 5% contingency in the amount of $2,994 for a total cost of $62,870. Item eight, award of the low bid for the 2025 McLory Bike Path Resurfacing Project to man of all construction and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $236,664, as well as approving a 10% contingency in the amount of $23,666 for a total cost of $260,330. Item nine, approval of a 10% construction contingency for the Cherokee School Sidewalk Connection Project in the amount of $24,614 for invoices to the State of Illinois Department of Transportation. And finally, approval to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with American Seal Coating of Indiana for South Park Tennis and Basketball Court Resurfacing Services in the amount of $27,100 to include a contingency in the amount of $2,900 for a total cost of $30,000. Are there any of those items that the Alderman would like removed or taken separately? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to vote on these, and get to the others. All right, at this time, can I have a motion to approve the omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Very good, okay. I was asked prior to the meeting by an Alderman if we could pull item five, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 39 of the City Code of Ordinances regarding municipal grocery taxes with the adoption of a 1% grocery tax effective January 1, 2026. So at this time, are there any comments from Alderman concerning omnibus item number Jason, would you like to give an explanation of what exactly we are asking Alderman to approve?
Sure. As a summary of this item, which appeared on your last agenda for first reading as well, the State of Illinois, as part of its FY25 budget, I believe, repealed the 1% tax on groceries. But as you recall from the conversation, while the State of Illinois collects those revenues, they ultimately don't receive any portion of those revenues. It serves as a pass-through from the state to local municipalities. So the decision to repeal the tax, which has been in place for many decades, the financial burden is borne exclusively by municipalities. And by law, the state has allowed municipalities, both home rule and non-home rule, the ability to impose a local 1% grocery tax to ensure that revenues that have been collected for extended periods of time can continue into the future. Absent any action by the council, the 1% tax would expire on January 1 of 2026, and by law, in order for a local municipal tax to take effect at that time, council action would be required prior to July 1. And I should just add, for additional information for the community, the city receives about $525,000 a year annually in grocery tax revenue.
That was my question. Are there other questions or comments from the Alderman regarding this matter? Okay. I'm going to ask to see if there's any public comment on this specific agenda item. Ms. Lopat, we know who you are and where you live.
I'll just say it again. I'm Rami Lopat. I live in the first ward at 410 East Woodland Road. And yes, you'll see me again on the next agenda item. So, okay. The 1% grocery tax, $525,000, will be collected, as Jason said, Mr. Which has said, to be used in the general fund for operating expenses. So as I see it, fees and petty taxes have been steadily increasing in Lake Forest over the years. 10 years ago, I remember you implemented a new sanitation fee. That was $930,000 a year. Then came a public safety awareness fee. I don't know how much that brought in. Then there was a home rule sales tax of 1% to fund capital improvement projects. Again, I don't know how much revenue. I think the sanitation fee went up again in 2019. So I'm looking for a list, perhaps, of all the fees, including this reinstated 1% grocery tax, that you have approved over, say, the last 10 or 15 years, and those that you may have removed, so that we have a feeling for how many hidden fees taxpayers are incurring. And I would love to hear, maybe, again, maybe you've had this discussion before and I missed it, very possible, of what you see as the tipping point. When do you scale back projects? When do you scale back costs so that we are assured that we are not overtaxed with these hidden fees? I know you get around town, I get around a lot, talk to a lot of people, and I'm picking up a lot of chatter about taxes in Lake Forest. So I'm not complaining, I'm just asking about assuring people that we're doing the right, that we're steady as you go, we're doing the right thing by them. And that is my comment. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. One brief response to your comment, it's a public safety pension fee specifically collected for the purposes of paying off a pension liability that was really out of control, and it's been very helpful in getting that under control. So just wanted for clarification. Okay. Are there any other comments on this agenda item? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to move for a motion to approve the consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 39 of the City Code of Ordinances regarding municipal grocery taxes with the adoption of a 1% grocery tax effective January 1, 2026. Final reading, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, this will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
I am going to abstain because this is, it is a political shell game, in my opinion. I don't want to vote for it, and I don't want to vote against it. I made my feelings clear last meeting, so, and I was the one who asked for it to be polled. This is for political gain, and it's nothing more than a sham, so I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Seven yea, one abstention, motion carries.
Very good, okay. We will now move on to consideration of ordinances amending the City of Lake Forest Code Sections 97.020, 97.021, and 97.022 pertaining to the Park and Recreation Board, and Section 32.095 pertaining to the legal committee. And I would open this agenda item up to discussion among the Alderman, someone that would like to comment on this matter. Okay, Alderman Novit.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my fellow board members. I was initially concerned when we initially considered this change. My initial, I'll keep using the word initial, my primary concern was that it closed off a volunteer opportunity for people in the community. And I felt very strongly that the more opportunities people have to volunteer, the more people will continue volunteering, and they'll move up to bigger, to new boards, and take on more responsibilities, and maybe someday wind up up here like us. But the point is to involve as many citizens, as many residents as we can, in these boards and commissions. That's why they're created. That's what makes Lake Forest work. My second concern did go back to the oversight with the legal committee, and then I had a third concern about the Parks and Recreation Board. If people feel that their time is not being effectively spent, I don't know if that's not a reflection on the people that are sitting in the chairs. Maybe they're not the right people for the boards that they've been appointed to. I can't believe that we can't address this in a more effective, in a more responsible way. Maybe what we do is take 12 months and look at what we're asking the director's staff to do. We have a new sport, a new parks director. Maybe he wants to develop a better opportunity to involve the public in a Parks and Recreation Board than has been done in years past. The legal committee, we've heard from members of the legal committee, that they do feel that they're doing effective work, and they do feel like their work is being, is, their time is well-spent, and their work is valuable. I just don't know that dissolving these committees is the best way to address what may or may not be a problem.
Are there other comments or questions? Alderman Walther?
Just a question. So I've only been on the council for two years, and the legal committee is supposed to be advisory to us, and yet, in the last two years, I haven't seen anything that's come before me that included a comment from the legal committee as being advisory to us, right? So my question is to maybe some of the more senior Aldermen, in your six years on the council, did you ever see advisories that were helpful from that committee?
And so, two points. The short answer is no. There was a time when we were involved with litigation over on Phase 3 McKinley, but we were advised by our city attorney that our advisory committee, there was an issue with attorney-client privilege, and that in that capacity, they could not advise, which to me would have been the most consequential thing. So my short answer is no. And then pivoting to the Parks and Rec Board, I was a liaison for four years on that board. Half the meetings were canceled. The other half, staff was struggling to find information to present, and having just sat as chair of the Public Works Committee for the last two years, I found that the work that we did was, was at a certain time, very, very busy, and very, very consequential. And when we didn't have meetings, we didn't meet. I do believe strongly that taking Parks and Rec and forming a committee within city council is probably going to be a far more efficient of not only our time, but staff's time. Nancy, I completely agree with you that we're losing an opportunity for volunteers, but my interaction with better than half of the board members, they felt that it was a backwater committee that really didn't do a lot, with that one exception I referenced, let me finish, two years ago, when we did do the athletic fields. And that I actually became quite uncomfortable with, because I didn't feel as though they had all the information that was necessary for it to proceed through that board to make a recommendation to city council at that time. So I felt like we were giving them a burden that we did not provide enough information for. So I felt as though, in a way, that consequential decision really kind of pulled back the curtain for me in terms of that was not the appropriate body for that, and that would have been handled much better as a subcommittee out of city council, having three Aldermen. So I do strongly support the notion of terminating the Parks and Rec Board, and then forming a committee of three with city council and meeting to address the needs that the director might see fit. So I have to really disagree with you on the Parks and Rec Board, but given the input that we've had tonight, up until this point, I had not received an email, a phone call, or anything regarding legal committee. I'm glad, I'm heartened to see that there were people that did show up and expressed an interest. So I might suggest that you make a motion, if you'd like, to table it. The problem with tabling it is, we're going to have to come back to this again, and that means that three, are there three members on legal committee?
There is five, although my understanding is that two have, are terming off as of this new fiscal year.
Well, so the problem is, is we're doing this right at the changing of the guard, but my comfort level, maybe your comfort level, is you make a motion to table, which supersedes any other motions. you make a motion to table, which supersedes any other motions out there. And it does not warrant or merit discussion. It's a motion to table and it will be brought back in front of the body again in two weeks and four weeks or whatever. But that does require a majority vote. So you're going to have to, at this juncture, convince four of your colleagues to say, I think it's worth a deeper dive.
Can I just say one thing? Rich, I went to every Legal Committee meeting over the course of the last 12 months. There is constructive work being done and we do not give reports. I've asked if I can and have been advised that I can't because of the confidentiality issue.
I'd just like to ask a question. Can you give me an example of an issue that was, in general terms, addressed by the Legal Committee where they led to some action or specific decision for the city staff? So I'm trying to, because I'm not aware of any.
My, my.
They didn't come to me.
Okay. My understanding of the role of the committee is oversight.
Okay.
So that's.
So can you give me some important oversight that you provided where it either affirmed or didn't affirm the city's position on a matter?
I, my recollection, and again, I'm not prepared to answer this specifically, but my recollection is that during the course of the meetings, there would be presentations about pending litigation or pending matters. And the Legal Committee would look at, and it's all done confidentially. So nobody gets a report beforehand. You look at it at the table and you leave it at the table. So you get it, you take a look at it, and then you determine whether or not the work that's being done is appropriate. It's a review. It's a check and balance on the work being done at the time.
I'm just, maybe Jason or somebody over there can give an example of some general issue that the Legal Committee in the past year provided useful, meaningful insight into or oversight of. Because again, I mean, this is the whole point of what we're doing here. I mean, if we're discussing cases of slip and fall that are being handled by Irma and we present them to the Legal Committee and say, hey, we have this case. Irma's taken care of it. The next one, we have that case. Irma's taken. I mean, I'm trying to get a general understanding of what folks do. You know, there's a little element of this. If a tree falls in the woods and nobody hears of it, does it make any noise to this discussion?
Sure. So I can provide a couple of comments. I'll preface with the caveat that, you know, staff don't have a formal opinion on what is clearly a policy matter for the council to decide. But as someone who attends the Legal Committee meetings, I can say that if you look back over a more extended period of time, say, the last six or seven years, I don't recall exactly when it was, the Legal Committee did provide recommendations to the City Council on revisions to the city's ethics ordinance after that had been specifically remanded to the committee by the City Council. That was probably, again, don't quote me exactly, but five to six years ago. Since that time, again, maybe just a little clarification. Some of the things that the Legal Committee is involved in is reviewing at an aggregate level, the legal expenses of the city. And I think that came to be at a point in time, again, this predates me by some time, when there was concern from the council about the extent of legal expenses that were being incurred. I think that may have been referenced earlier. While they continue to serve in that role, one wrinkle that I think should be noted is that going back to about 2017, 2018, 2019, when there were concerns about legal expenses at the time, the City Council enacted additional fiscal policies and procedures that had the Finance Chair of the Subcommittee, of the Finance Committee, review monthly expenses, not just aggregate spending levels, but detailed invoices. So there is still some check and balance there to make sure that expenses are being managed appropriately and effectively. Other than that, in terms of specific legal guidance, I'll probably defer to the city attorney if there are more specific questions. But certainly, my understanding is that the attorneys on the Legal Committee, for ethics reasons, are prohibited from providing formal legal advice to the city. So that's always been a bit of a challenge in that area. But no question, we do review ongoing matters of litigation and there are conversations that happen. Ultimately, you know, we rely on our formal counsel to ultimately draft or devise strategy around the city's legal positions. But certainly, it is discussed regularly with members of the committee. I don't know if that's helpful or not.
It is what it is.
So to that, to that point, you just brought back a memory that was seared in my brain. When we talked about the Ethics Code, we had two very vocal members of City Council who were both attorneys, who really disagreed with the Legal Committee's presentation. And just when you said that, when you referenced that, that really struck a chord with me. And we ultimately adopted the ethics policy that the Legal Committee did set forth, that the strenuous objection of the two attorneys on the City Council. So I've had a personal experience, now that I sit here and think about it, where it was relevant. So that's just from the guy who's been here for the last six years, at least during my tenure.
Okay. Yes. Alderman Weber.
I just wanted to confirm that I do go through all of the invoices that I receive from our attorneys.
Yes.
To the point where if they reference Village and not City, I point that out, too.
Yeah. And I was going to actually get to the point that Finance Committee reviews legal billings on a monthly basis. My understanding is Legal Committee meets quarterly. So even if they do review these, it's already been done. And if there's something that the council needs to be aware of, Finance Committee Chair has the knowledge and ability to do this. So that's really not an ongoing role. The other thing that I would say to people is, about one year ago, I attended a Legal Committee meeting. And at the time, we'd had some discussion about the function of the committee and what they were actually doing. And so I attended a meeting to sort of see what was going on. And in that meeting, at the end of the meeting, actually, I asked the attendees, which the entire committee wasn't there, but the ones who were, if they felt that what they were doing was meaningful and if they felt that it was valuable to the city. And in part, the reason I asked was, what we had discussed at that meeting was very mundane a recitation of some outstanding minor litigation that Irma was handling and there was really nothing else to talk about. And I will say that the members of the committee felt like they were happy with what they were doing. And so for the next year, we didn't change anything. And now we're here. But again, we're here because I don't believe in the past year, much has changed from the meeting that I attended in terms of substantive material that's being reviewed. And again, what we're looking for here, and I've just got some other general comments to make about both of these things, is trying to create efficiencies and not create work. Okay? If things are already being done, if there's already oversight, if we have the ability, when needed, to create a committee to address a specific issue, we can do that. That's a very effective mechanism that we use for many things in the city. And it uses people's time and talents very efficiently without the need for staff to have scheduled meetings and find things to talk about, which seems to be an issue for both of these committees. Staff has, and I'm not throwing you under the bus. This is just a simple observation. They sometimes have to spend hours trying to create agendas because there isn't really anything that needs to be discussed. So a couple other points that I'd like to make about this is, as it relates to, you know, the Legal Affairs Committee and the Parks and Rec Board, the members of these committees are both appointed by the mayor. They're not elected officials. On the other hand, as it relates to Parks and Rec, the Committee of the Council that we're discussing, replacing Parks and Rec Board with, will be composed of three elected officials, just like the Parks and Rec Board. And there is public notice of meetings and agendas. So we're not removing the ability of the public to know what we're doing, to participate in what we're doing. And we're actually increasing the connection between the decision-makers and the public because you have the opportunity to unelect somebody if you don't like the way they're performing on committees, such as the Parks and Rec Subcommittee. I will tell you that the committees of the City Council have significantly higher attendance than these two committees. Okay? Our attendance rate is probably 95%. Neither one of these two committees has anywhere near that. And part of that relates to, could it be that we're selecting the wrong people? I suppose it could be. Or could it be that people are going and saying, this is a waste of my time, I'm not going to show up? And they're voting with their feet.
Or they're meeting at 3:00 in the afternoon and someone has a trial and can't be there.
Listen, I get it. But aldermen have the same potential issues, right? Those of us who are employed. I'm not employed, so I don't have the issue. But anyway. You know, most city policy projects are created at the council committee level, Public Works, Finance Committee. And they're presented by committee chairs to the council. These two don't really work that way. And so again, I think that when we're trying to get the most out of our committee structures, the proposed Subcommittee replacement for Parks and Rec, I think clearly does that. And again, legal is sort of a different thing. I want to remind people, Parks and Rec and Legal Committee are recommending boards. I've heard some objections to eliminating Parks and Rec saying, oh, well, Parks and Rec has to approve the budgets and all these things. No, they don't. They're a recommending board. City Council approves the budgets, expenditures. City Council creates policy. That's how it works. We already talked about that one. I mentioned earlier, you know, the idea of, for Parks and Rec, legal, if there are specific issues that we need community members to address, we create committees, just like we did for the police station project. We created a committee of community members of subject matter experts who weighed in on the issue. And their time was very well-spent. It was very efficient and it was very productive. We have the ability to continue to do that, both in the Parks and Rec field as well as the legal field as needed. If the City Council feels that there's a legal issue that we need to have looked at, we can reach out to those of you who are, you know, legal experts in the community and say, hey, we have an issue. We'd like to bring you in for this purpose. And then we're not creating meetings that you have to come to where we don't discuss meaningful things. You know, in my opinion, the action that we're requesting makes these committees more responsive because they're elective officials. Greater oversight, again, elective officials are more readily accessible to the public than board members are. Okay? I'm not too sure that anybody on the Legal Committee has ever been approached by a community member about a legal issue. Parks and Rec Board, maybe, more often. And this, in essence, the staff is clearly much more responsive to input from City Council members than they are from more remote committees. I'm not saying they disregard them, but it's, I mean, there's a much closer connection here. So I'm just going to conclude this by saying that I, it is my personal recommendation. And by the way, these weren't just thought of two weeks ago. These have been things that we've been talking about, thinking about for a year. Okay? Trying to create a mechanism that is more efficient form of city government. So that being said, unless there's other comments. Alderman Powers?
Yeah. I'd like to make a few quick comments. I'm going to parse these two issues because I'm not sufficiently knowledgeable to address the Legal Committee. However, I do appreciate and respect the passion that's there. People keep using transparency, like there are some things being hidden. And I can tell you, having sat here with Alderman Walther for the last two years, I don't think there's anything that we do that isn't recorded, as two relatively new guys, I mean, that isn't recorded, isn't documented, isn't posted in minutes. And I get that question a lot. I had that question three or four times this week about, well, you're eliminating the transparency of what's going on. I don't believe in that. However, I do believe, for example, and then I'll move on to Parks and Rec, with Legal, if the community views this as nothing other than an insurance policy and people want to invest their own time, then perhaps it's something that we should, we should consider. So Nancy, if that's something that you want to propose, I'm happy to entertain that. What I do want to move on to is Parks and Rec. I serve as the current liaison on that board and have for the last 12 months. Prior to that and prior life, I spent over 10 years on the Friends of Lake Forest Park and Rec Foundation, served on numerous subcommittees, whether it be golf course-related or others. All the people that serve on those committees officially in the board, dozens and dozens over the years, are fantastic citizens and contribute. The thing that I've heard a lot is if there was something more robust for them to do or other committees that they could be assigned to that does have a much more business-oriented or financial obligation, that was something that they were more interested in investing their time in. We've had a meeting every single month. Four of them have been canceled for sure. And I think a fifth one might have been canceled in February. So it's very difficult to get these working people, business people and families, to these 6:30 PM meetings in a consistent way when they don't feel like they're adding material value. I can tell you, as one of the people asked to serve on that committee, if we move forward, along with Alderman Clemmons and Alderman Levert, we're the people you hold accountable. So we sit up here every two weeks. We're at all the budget meetings, all the finance meetings. If anybody has any questions or concerns about what's going on as it relates to Park and Rec or any other of the committees that we all serve on, you know, we're readily available and I gladly take your phone calls at any time. The last thing I want to say is, and the mayor touched on this in terms of efficiency, Mike Wick and his team, the amount of hours, and that goes for a lot of the other staff members, too, that they invest is substantial. And I oftentimes found myself sitting there at 8:00 at night with an agenda that I personally didn't view as all that material. And these people are away from their families for something that I don't think is all that relevant. The last comment I would make in terms of that board, every single one of those meaningful developments comes here. And it comes here for us to discuss independently. And then it formally is released to the community in terms of what we would like to happen, what staff is proposing happens and to gain deeper insight into why that's recommended and why it should be an important part of Parks and Recs. So I'll yield back the time that I certainly do not have, but free it up to somebody else. But appreciate everybody's input for sure.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add my two cents. Nancy, I certainly share your interest and desire in making sure that the community is as involved as possible. And I will always support that. Mayor Tagg and Alderman Gashgarian raised two important points that got me comfortable when we first raised the discussion the other week. And that's, the last thing I want to do is waste people's time. In my, just like Alderman Gashgarian made a point, I've, you know, been on council just a short bit less than he has. And aside from the ethics matter, I honestly don't remember entertaining any other discussions about a Park and Rec matter, you know, other than, say, the park, Deerpath Park redevelopment or on the legal front, the ethics matter. Alderman Tagg, last week, also pointed out the fact of the opportunity to put together ad hoc committees. And I honestly, over all my years, preceding my time on City Council, on other boards and commissions, and having been on other ad hoc committees, really see the ad hoc committee process as being process as being probably one of the most valuable uses of both the participants' time and the City Council's, where we can set people who have an expertise on a subject matter to really dig in and provide a recommendation to us on council, who are really laymen in particular matters, relying on that expertise. In those two regards, I really, I feel, I have not heard enough compelling things at warrant keeping both those committees intact, and support that there are better ways to skin the cat, as Mayor Tagg has offered of.
Are there other comments or questions? Alderman Novit?
I have one more comment. If the point of the Legal Committee is to provide oversight, and if there's an ethics question, having somebody in the mayor's office and the city manager's office be the people to set the ad hoc committee members removes the independent oversight that the Legal Committee would provide. The Legal Committee is made up of people who are vetted by the caucus. They come from the community, from a field of four wards of people presenting names. This is not coming from City Hall. And I think it's really important, especially in an oversight issue, that the people that would be called upon to oversee it would be people from the community at large, not from a specific location.
But they have no authority.
But they're, who has no authority to do that?
I can address this if you'd like. So, we do have an ethics ordinance, and it was years ago that that was put in place. The Legal Committee is not the body that oversees ethics for the city. So, it is, the city manager provides guidance, with the City Council being the Ethics Commission, and then the City Council can delegate an ethics matter or complaint to the Audit Committee. And so, it is not the Legal Committee, it's the Audit Committee, that would take care of that sort of ethics oversight. So, I think that concern is already kind of handled with that volunteer committee.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions? And, a little bit, I lost track, but did I ask for public comment yet? I don't believe I did. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this matter, that hasn't already commented on the matter?
Rami Lopat. I couldn't agree with you more, Alderman Novit. I disagree. I don't think I have enough information to agree or disagree, but mostly, I disagree with getting, dissolving the Legal Committee and the Parks and Rec Board at this time. One reason for their demise, according to you Alderman Notes and you, Mr. Mayor, is because there's not enough meaningful work for these volunteers. If this is the case, they should be offered meaningful work. They should be offered meaningful policies and issues to discuss, something to bite off. And I can look at, for example, all the inconsistencies in one chapter of the city code. Let's talk about the tree ordinance.
No.
Why not? Excuse me.
Because we're talking about a specific agenda item now, so I am...
The Parks and Rec Board.
Okay.
Parks manages trees.
Trees tonight. Please, just talk about the agenda item in front of us.
The Parks and Rec Board would have valuable information for the community about redoing the tree ordinance. Legal Committee, for example, the inconsistencies of just how to remove a commissioner from a board. That's meaningful work to look at the city code and resolve its inconsistencies. So, I could be convinced that your ad hoc idea is a good one, if, if convinced as well that independent voices, voices that would come up with pertinent questions, penetrating questions, insist on specific answers, and come up with best solutions for the city, that would work for me. But I want your assurance that those independent voices can be found, and that they maintain their independence when they're put on a mayoral committee, a City Council Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion? I know that there may be further comments, Mayor, on this, even though it was addressed in the non-agenda item. We talked about different things, so I might suggest that we let some of the people who spoke before rise and speak again. I mean, we're...
It's your last meeting. Would anybody who's previously spoken like to speak again for three minutes? Mr. Murdis?
And just to be clear, these are not part of my prepared notes, so I may be shorter or longer, depending. I've listened to what everybody's had to say. I think it's been a good discourse. You know, what I'll say is that Julie does a great job. You know, we're fortunate right now that we're in a good position. We really are. Jason does a great job. But you don't always have that luxury. And the fact of the matter is that with the Legal Committee, what you end up really having is a nonpartisan, unbiased, presumably, body that's already been established before trouble starts. The notion that an ad hoc committee can solve everything, it's a good notion for project-based things that arise. It really is, and can be extremely effective. But let's say that all of you are the defendants in the lawsuit. Who's coming up with the ad hoc committee? How is that going to be formed? How much time does that take? And so, what I suggested is that, I believe that, you know, it's been April 21st through May 5th that this has been given consideration for a committee that's stood on the books and in operation for over 20 years. And I think it warrants a bit more time. I think it warrants more feedback. I think that is the cautious approach. That is the approach that a lawyer would take, and it might not be the approach that the council wants to hear, but in this seat now, I can give those sorts of views, and it's okay. It's not a criticism individually. Each of you has your own experiences and your own acumen. But if it's not you in that chair, and you're handing it off to the next group that is going to govern, where is that going to sit? And I think we all need to think about looking forward to how we keep Lake Forest as great as it is. And I do believe that the Legal Committee has played a real role in helping in that regard. Now, let me also point out that I know it's difficult to come up with the tangible thing, that what is the Legal Committee recommendation that somebody came up with? But in these meetings, and maybe a lot of you don't understand them, it took me a bit to understand what was going on, okay? I have clients that put together advisory boards, okay? They're not fiduciary board members. They give advice. They just give opinions based on their experience, and their business acumen, and their past skills that they've developed over time, and they share that. And with that, what they try and do is push and pull on the systems that are in place to help them do better. And I do believe that we push on Jason a bit, and I'm sure he can attest to that, that we push him to do better, and do better than a minimum, or do better than a standard that might be on the books. And with Julie, I believe she knows that if they're off the mark, somebody on that committee is probably going to catch it. And like I said, Julie's great. We've had no issues whatsoever with Julie. But what if it's not Julie? So, I'd encourage you to just really think about, you know, this has been a total of, from April 21st to May 5th, and most of the committee people weren't even notified. And I just believe it warrants some further examination before putting forward such a serious vote. And I also, as a last point, I do not believe that these two, with the Parks and Rec and the Legal Committee, can be put together as one. It's not the same set of issues. It's just not. With all due respect, the Legal Committee is a completely different type of body, completely different function. And does it have authority to make the decisions? It doesn't have the authority to make the decisions. But that's what's protective about it. It has the authority to call bullshit. It has the authority to make people feel pushed to do better, but it doesn't have the authority to make the decisions. Thank you.
And thank you. Yes, Ms. Garrett?
I was just going to respond briefly, that it has in fact been over a year that we've been contemplating this and looking into this. So, your exposure to it may have been much shorter, but I can assure you that we've debated this internally for some time.
Yeah, I just want to thank you all for talking about this and discussing it. As the previous speaker said, we've had 14 days to disband, I think, two important committees. I'm only here to speak to keeping the Legal Committee in place. I think it is, somebody said, like an insurance policy. You never know when you're going to need it, but when you don't have it and you need it, then all hell breaks loose. So, and to put the kind of pressure only on the city attorney, city attorney has enough to do on her own, but the Legal Committee is a backup, is an oversight, and is a checks and balance. But I think importantly, that the discussion tonight has been revealing, it's been very open and honest, and I hope there's a way to either not push through tonight the, you know, disbanding these committees, or at least the Legal Committee, but that you think about what you talked about and restructure, or maybe make the Legal Committee more responsive to your needs. But it certainly does benefit the citizens of Lake Forest, and I think that's what we're all here for. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there others? Okay. So, at this time, we're going to separate these two in terms of motions. You look to me like you're interested in doing...
I will funnel my way through making a motion on this. I move that we table the decision about the Legal Committee, and frankly, I don't know how... I think we should table it, come back in two weeks with a better, either a better schedule or a better framework. I'm not really sure what we're looking for in terms of a solution. I think we're going to need to figure out a solution for this.
Honestly, if I may interrupt?
No.
If we're going to...
You cannot. There's been a motion made on the floor. So, it has to be seconded. It's a superseding motion. So, just to be really specific.
Okay. So, we have a motion. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll sec, I'll second it.
Okay. So, then, this would be a roll call vote, and so, we'll have a roll call vote on the motion to table specifically the recommendation concerning the Legal Committee, Section 32.095.
All right. Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Waller?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay. So, then, we will move on to the issue of amending the City of Lake Forest Code, Section 97.020, 97.021, and 97.022 pertaining to the Park and Recreation Board. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, it'll be a roll call vote.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Waller?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Note?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
And, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I should have asked prior to the vote on the Legal Committee, but with the vote to table, I would ask, is there direction to staff as to what you're seeking in two weeks?
I was going to get to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. So, we have voted to table the motion, or terminating the Legal Affairs Committee, and so, I guess I would ask for commentary on next actions. What is the proposed alternative? Alderman Notes?
Could we simply, on the next council agenda, have set time aside to have an open discussion amongst ourselves about what we see that role being?
Isn't that what we're doing tomorrow?
Are we looking to do that now? I mean...
I believe we just spent half an hour doing it.
But not, not what it would be.
No. And furthermore, to that point, though, the motion to table just means that it's going to be revisited, so we're not compelled to do it in two weeks or four weeks. I think right now, we do need to decide what, to the mayor's point, what is it we're looking at? What are we going to act upon? What type of public commentary are we going to solicit? Because, in all fairness and all honesty, I was ready to disband the Legal Committee prior to this meeting, but getting input from the public gave me enough incentive to realize that the public's not comfortable with it, and I would feel much more comfortable if we had people that had the opportunity to offer up their opinions. I won't be here next time, but it may take some convincing, at least in my mind's eye, why it shouldn't be disbanded, but I still think it's critical that we offer up that opportunity. So, I would open up to my colleagues as to what is the appropriate timeframe. Are you going to get all the information you need in two weeks or four weeks?
No.
What information are you looking for? What type of input?
Let me just sort of narrow this down a little bit. It seems to me that this is really a very binary choice. It's not like there's something to recreate here. You either believe that what is in existence is valuable, which is the opinion expressed by some, or you believe that it is not valuable, in which case, we had the opportunity to terminate it, and the council chose not to. So, from my perspective, I don't see that there's anything for the city staff to spend any time on. I'll direct the caucus to recruit some new volunteers to replace the two that are leaving, and we'll try to reconstitute the membership of the board, and they'll continue functioning as they do, because apparently, a decision's been made that that's a valuable function. I would leave it at that.
No, I have to disagree. We didn't vote to keep the, we voted to table the item and investigate further. I'm sorry, but...
Okay, well, what we're asking for is direction. What do you want us to investigate that we didn't just investigate?
There's three...
Because I'm, I'm asking the question. I'm at a loss, but I would like Alderman to address that issue. What is it? We are tabling this for what purpose? If the purpose is just to say, "Well, we just want to wait a longer period of time to have the same vote," what new information do we need to get for you that will illuminate the issue such that you feel that you can make a final decision? That's what I would like to know. Alderman Walther?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I stated earlier that I hadn't seen any advisories come from that committee in my first two years. However, I would like to see, I would like to be a person who sees what's on the table. So, as an example, if a, the last meeting or the last two meetings' worth of content can be made available to me, so that I could see what they're reviewing, what their comments were on the materials, I would have a better understanding for what goes on in the doors of a committee meeting. So, can those materials be made available to the City Council?
Certainly, agendas and minutes are available on the website already. We can share those with the council. Is there more specific information you're looking for?
On the public website?
Mm-hmm.
For the legal?
Not the executive.
Not the executive session?
No.
And some of the pending litigation that we discussed as a matter of executive session, certainly, I think, could be shared.
So, prior to today's meeting, I went to the Dropbox area of what I have access to, and I didn't see anything from Legal.
It may not be in your Dropbox. I'll defer to the clerk, but the minutes and the agendas should be available on the website. Irrespective of that, happy to send them to the City Council. That's no problem.
Then, my fault for not finding them on the website.
Is there any other direction, specific information that you would like to have accumulated so that the next time we present this tabled item, a final decision could be made? so that the next time we present this tabled item, a final decision could be made?
I would just like, excuse me, I'd just like to comment on the fact that I was prepared to abolish this committee. However, after several phone calls from community members and our conversation tonight, it's clear to me that there are a handful of members in the community that are concerned about the fact, the whole idea that this is legal committee is perceived as being much more meaningful than I personally believe it is. But I also think there are many members terming off of this committee, and whether or not we're going to get others that want to serve on it will be determined through the mayor or through the caucus or through the city staff or whatever that may be. I would propose that the committee stay exactly as the mayor has recommended through the end of the year, which gives everybody ample time to either learn, educate themselves, change their vote, or harden your current position as to what you believe is the right or wrong thing to do. And then that way, nobody feels like we're trying to do something in two weeks, even though this issue has been discussed at length between us and staff for quite some time. I realize the community hasn't been exposed to that, so let's expose whoever in the community wants to be aware of what's been going on with this committee. We can provide that.
I have a legal question. Is there a time limit to how long we can table an item, or can we say, we'll revisit this one year from today?
So, when you table it without putting a date certain to it-
Yep.
-it's incumbent on you or somebody to pull it back onto the table or off the table. You could give direction to staff as sort of a, we would like this put on the agenda in December or January, and then you would make a motion to pull the item off the table and have that discussion. So, you could definitely do that.
But this doesn't need to be decided this evening. We can just leave it on the table and move on to the next agenda item. Correct?
Does the committee, as it currently sits, continue to meet while this agenda item is tabled? I would think so.
The ordinance has not been approved final-
Right.
So, the code provision remains in place-
Okay, then.
-for the legal committee.
With the open seats that are on the committee, because of the people that are termed off, are we asking caucus to find people then to put on the committee to keep it full?
So-
All right, all right. Point to people.
Have there been caucus presentations for the legal committee?
No.
So, the way it works on a commission or a committee, unless somebody resigns and doesn't want to serve anymore, they continue on as holdover.
Okay.
So it could be, if they were willing to stay on until new members were appointed, that's how state statute works.
Okay, even if they're terroristic.
Unless the person resigns and does, you can't force somebody to be in the committee.
Right.
But if they're willing to stay on, they could serve as holdover.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is the, basically, the end of the caucus calendar. If there are two people terming off, then the caucus likely has found two people to fill those positions.
Question to be asked.
No questions.
And if they haven't, like I said, I can appoint.
Yes.
It's a mayoral appointment. So, all right. Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is old business, of which there is none this evening. New business. This is consideration of requests for naming rights for the baseball field at Everett Park in memory of Stephen Malin Jr., and this will be by motion, and this will be introduced by retiring Alderman Ara Gashgarian.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's move on to something on a positive note. I'm assuming that everybody has read their packet, but I want to summarize this. As a city council, we recently approved a formal naming policy, naming rights policy for the amenities in the City of Lake, in the city regarding facilities and parks. For a long time, we had no formal policy, and there was some level of uncertainty in terms of how we go about doing that. We have had recent events, six years ago, when we had the North Beach Access Road cave-in, and we approved through the generous donation of Nancy Hughes, naming that the Hughes Parkway. More recently, David and Diana Moore did a very generous gift as a lead donor for the boardwalk, and we gave them the opportunity to name that, but it became clear that we did not have a policy that was modified. So, we most recently did formulate a policy, I think it was in February. I'm privileged to prevent the first request submitted under this new policy. Twenty years ago, this community tragically lost a young boy, Stephen Malin Jr. His family, his parents, Stephen Maria, and his sisters Francesca and Brianna, remain an active part of our community. Stephen's memory is held close in many of our hearts. And to talk a little bit more about Stevie. Stevie loved basketball, and specifically, Stephen loved playing baseball at the field in Everett Park near his home. Steve's dad actually did play professional baseball for several years. In memory of Stephen, his family and friends took it upon themselves to donate funding, materials, and labor to improve that ball field where Stephen spent so many happy days. In your write-up, you'll see back in 2005, their donations and in-kind services totaled about $330,000. It's heartwarming to see so many in our community benefiting from that generosity that the Malins brought forward to our community and enjoying the field, and to me, it seems fitting to memorialize Stephen at that field in the midst of pitches, cracking bats, home runs, and cheers of fans. I ask my fellow Aldermen to join me in voting in favor of granting naming rights to the Malin family to allow the ball field at Everett Park to be named in memory of Stephen Malin Jr. With the direction of, with the direction to staff to work with the Malins to finalize signage consistent with the adopted policy and present a resolution documenting the council's support at a future meeting for the signage. So, there's an actionable item in front of you today. Requesting, let me get to that. Mayor, I'll let you read the council action.
Sure. May I have a motion to approve or granting naming rights for the baseball field at Everett Park to the Malin family in memory of Stephen Malin Jr. and direct that signage be finalized and a resolution documenting the council's approval be presented at a future meeting? You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And this will be a roll call vote.
This will be fun.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Waller.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
An overdue, aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you. How about that, right over here? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that. Malins, would you like to come up and make some commentary to the council? I apologize, I didn't know who you were.
I'm a white guy, sir. Just thank you all.
Please come up to the-
We've been waiting for 21 years since we completed the ball field. You made my day. Thank you.
Mayor Tack, members of the city council, Jason Wishe, Kathy Cerniak, on behalf of our whole family, we just cannot thank you enough for this kindest gesture led by Alderman Well, Stephen died at the West Lake Forest train station 22 years ago, and we directed any obituary donations to be to the City of Lake Forest, specifically to the Parks and Rec, because Stephen loved being at the rec center so much horsing around. We thought we might be able to offer a new ping pong table to the rec all those years ago, but with all the generosity, family, friends, community members, and all the many in-kind donations of labor and materials, we were able to help turn a little, simple little baseball field in back of our house at Everett Park into a tournament-worthy, proud amenity in our community. And this community held our family up in our darkest hours, and now you have uplifted all of us with this kindest gesture. So from the bottom of our hearts, thank you.
Well, from all of us at the city council, thank you very much for your generosity, and I do hope that, you know, having the naming rights going forward provides you with some comfort for your loss. Okay. The next item will be introduced by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to everyone for their patience. This was a longer changing of the guard meeting than we're usually accustomed to. We got our money's worth out of Alderman Gashgarian's final meeting here tonight, so he's earned that zero-dollar salary. But before we turn it over, as tradition, to allow for comments at the dais, I first have a couple of items to present to Alderman Gashgarian. He's seen enough of these in his six years that hopefully he knows how this goes, but as is tradition and custom for the city, we'd like to present you with a certificate to plant a tree in your honor anywhere in the third ward, and you can coordinate that with our forestry division. And then, of course, we have one more gift. Bear with me, everyone. You've got to open it up to the group. And before I turn it over to the mayor and to the city council, I'd just like to say a few words, and I will keep it brief because, again, we are running a bit late tonight, but I just want to make a few comments on behalf of the city staff in thanking Alderman Gashgarian for what was a tremendous six years, and I think commenting on behalf of our city staff, I think the first thing I'd like to acknowledge was just what a strong advocate and supporter you have always been for the city staff. That's not to suggest that you don't challenge us and ask tough questions and hold us to very high standards. You do, but ultimately, that's what leads to good governance, it's what makes us better employees, and we've always known that we've had strong support from you and are very appreciative of that. I will also note our appreciation collectively of what we always saw as just a sincere and genuine interest in understanding the nuances of city operations, really wanting to understand what our staff did on a day-to-day basis, the complexities of how all of our operations combined together to their best effect, and whether that was participating in, you know, public safety, citizens academies, your service on the public works committee, even doing ride-alongs in the middle of the night during snowplow season. It was evident to staff just how much you really had a curiosity for all that we did. And a lot of the work that our staff does, it's generally appreciated by the public, but they don't really understand all that goes into the operations behind the scenes and really, again, just value your interest and curiosity in that. And then, finally, I'll just conclude as comments I had made, you know, a couple of weeks ago to you, but I think as a role model to others on the council, your commitment to the city's governance model, to our city's processes, understanding that upholding the integrity of those processes is more important than getting one's way on any individual vote or outcome, is an incredible legacy that you leave. And I know you've spent a lot of time communicating to the council, to the staff, to the public, a forward-looking vision about leaving this place better for the next city council. And having had the pleasure of working with you for the full six years of your tenure on the council, thinking about all that's been accomplished, I can say with confidence that if the goal is to pass the baton and leave it a little better than what you inherited, your term as an Alderman has been an incredible success. So, on behalf of the city staff, we're going to miss you. I know you won't be too far away, but thank you for your guidance and your leadership. And with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Okay. I will make comments first, followed by the respective Aldermen, and I would just like to say this for Era. Number one, I'm going to keep this very short because, you know, you saved the longest meeting for last in my term. But I have to say this, Era has been an incredible asset to the city council. For the four years before my time here, he served through what I would believe is one of the more tumultuous periods of the city council. There were, you know, numerous issues, including COVID, that had to be navigated, and there was a fair amount of contentious debate at city council meetings, and Era always acquitted himself very well through that period, being a stabilizing force and keeping his eye on the prize, if you will. One of the things that I will say about working with Era is what you see is not always what you get. I would particularly say that in executive sessions, Era could really start over here and end up over here. He was, he used very open mind, willing to critically think, listen to what's being presented to him, even if, even if his initial sense is that what he's hearing he doesn't like, he's still willing to absorb the information and make decisions based on facts and realities and not emotions. And he is, like I would say most Armenians, a very emotional fellow, but he doesn't let that get in his way of doing the job at hand. And he is, as many of you know, fairly good at sort of tightening the wires every once in a while to make sure that, you know, you feel his impact. But I've really appreciated working with him. He's given me great advice and guidance. He's my go-to for Robert's Rules of Order, as you found out this evening. And so I would just like to say thank you very much for everything you've given to the city and to me personally. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's just go in order from Alderman Clemmons.
Era, it's been a long six years. You and I have worked together going back six years. You ran a contested election successfully, but you being here in this political life in Lake Forest goes back actually 10 years, and it goes back to a couple of events that took place in Ward Three with Jack Reisenberg and Randy Tack. There were issues that came up 10 years ago regarding the Third Rail, which you remember, and also Whole Foods. And Jack Reisenberg and Randy Tack held meetings, preliminary meetings, to meet with the public and discuss both of these issues. I remember the one in particular, the one at Elwa in the barn, in which the room was packed to discuss Elwa. Both Jack and Randy were pressed against the back wall with no place to go, and I do remember being one of two people there that were in favor of Whole Foods. That was a whole nother experience. But the thing I took away from that meeting was the ability of both Jack and Randy to address the audience, to handle the questions, to do it in a professional- address the audience, to handle the questions, to do it in a professional manner, to not become the issue, but to just address the issue. And both Randy and Jack were going to be retiring from council. I was on caucus, and at the time, it became important to identify people that could do what Randy and Jack did. Years ago, we identified a couple candidates, Jim Preschleck and yourself. Lots of interviews, lots of meetings. Jim Preschleck was identified as the candidate then. And then, six years ago, you ran a contested election. I've been by your side through all of that. I've sat in this room. I watched when these were on, online, and you did an excellent job at counterbalancing kind of, as Randy said, a dysfunctional somewhat, city council. And between you and Jim, a lot of good things got done, but it was difficult. I know you both threatened me to, that you'd get me on council, so, but you thought it was going to be in Ward Three. I wanted to bring us up to the current. And a year ago, I went to a couple transparency meetings. And during that time, a lot of people presented. There were issues regarding the caucus. And I just wanted to mention your opponent, Joanne, was at that meeting. And towards the end of the meeting, she raised her hand. And she stood up and she addressed the entire audience. And she, she thanked the people that helped her run the campaign. And she said, although I'm disappointed to have not got on City Council, I have no regrets for the experience. I thought that the caucus ran a fair and open election and that my opponent was a gentleman. And, you know, that's, that's how you win elections. So I want to thank you on my behalf for the work you did with the City Council, and just want to leave you with a true compliment from an opponent.
Thank you. Era, thank you for all the guidance you've given us, especially when things get sticky. Thank you for always seeing the long game, never looking for a short-term game, but looking at what big picture is going to be the ramifications of the short-term decision. Thank you for showing us to be mindful of precedence. What this council does is going to impact other councils, and thank you for keeping us aware of that when making decisions. And thank you for always being available to me whenever I've had a question or a phone call. You were always just a text away, and I really, really appreciate it. Your love of Lake Forest is unparalleled, as far as I'm concerned. It's clear in all the projects you take on, the rescue boat. I didn't know about the ride-alongs and the snowplow. That's great. I'm very impressed with that. And championing our community every opportunity you have. But I think, as much as I'm going to miss you, I think the thing I'm really going to miss the most is seeing you wear your Lake Forest polo around town. So have fun. Keep wearing the shirt.
Era, thank you. There's two quick things that I want to say. You're thoughtful and you're to the point. But the best, I think the best characteristic that I've been able to witness is your willingness to always try to make something better. And I think the city of Lake Forest is in better shape because of that. I value you as a friend and a colleague, and I wish you the best. So thanks for all you've done.
Doc, it has been an absolute pleasure, you know, being with you the last five and a half years. You've been a stalwart leader on this council. It's been touched on, you know, when you and I came on, you certainly saw this more than I did. It was tough times up here. There was some very independent minds in this council. The value of this council is having eight independent minds. That's what makes this body the body it is. But we've got to always count on you, as I was trying to put some reflection on this time together, defender of the faith. I mean, you really were. I mean, you made sure that big personalities got managed, discussions stayed focused to the extent we could rein in those discussions at all. But that was certainly a great example to me coming on as the new guy back then. Over the last, you know, this time on council, you and I've had, I've had the pleasure of serving on a couple committees with you that you chaired. And, you know, what, even though these, you know, committee meetings are all open to the public, I can probably count on a hand if anyone's actually shown up for them. But it's as evident here at the dais as it is in these smaller, more intimate settings, you provoke thoughtful conversation, discourse, challenging everybody, not, you know, as Jason pointed out, challenging staff, but it's challenging everyone, you know, your fellow committee members to look at bigger picture, maybe see things differently. And even as Randy pointed out, you're open-minded and willing to take in impressions and weigh new facts that come in front of you. And I think you've taught that to all of us, how valuable that is. And any of that, you've been a great leader, great role model, become a tremendous friend over the last couple of years, and this is certainly not goodbye. You'll be missed, but as was also mentioned, you are leaving the council in as healthy of a place as certainly I've ever seen it, and that is in no small part to the contributions you gave us. Thank you.
So to really recognize the service and recognition of Alderman Gashkarian, the best way to honor him is with the top 10 list. So without further ado, number 10, he's the only alderman who can simultaneously straighten policy and teeth. Era brought his orthodontic precision to city council work, never afraid to realign things when they seemed out of place. Number nine, a lifelong Lake Forest resident, he knows this town like the back of his dental mirror. You can't buy that kind of perspective, especially when it comes with hometown pride and a long-term view. Number eight, I believe he actually read every packet before the meetings. Yes, every page, you came prepared, highlighted with comments and questions, three times. Number seven, he was never afraid to speak up, even when it made things a little uncomfortable. His candor, refreshing; his courage, admirable; his timing, sometimes a little surprising, but always from the heart. Number six, he valued collaboration. Era appreciated the diverse skills and experiences of his fellow council members. Number five, his passion for Lake Forest was unmatched. Whether development, infrastructure, or the future of our community, he cared deeply. Number four, he brought a unique balance of logic and heart. Policy decisions weren't just about data for Era, they were about people, neighbors, families, and the future of our city. Number three, his passion kept us on our toes. He could deliver a sharp observation at just the right moment. Number two, he held us and himself to a high standard, always asking, is this the best we can do, and often challenging us to do just a bit better. And the number one reason we'll miss Era Gashkarian of Alderman of the Third Ward is because he showed us what public service looks like when it's personal, principled, and never about ego, only about doing what's right for Lake Forest. Thank you, Era. I've had the pleasure of serving with you, going back to Third Ward Caucus, and these last five years have been great. Thank you so much.
Era, so prior to joining the council, I was a scoutmaster, and we taught our boys the 12 points of the Scout Law. One of those points was to be brave. Most of the boys thought that was an ability to overcome fear, some fear, maybe going down a hill or climbing a big mountain. But being brave was also standing up for what's right. And when I think about your time on the council, that's what draws me to you, is your bravery to stand up for what's right. And I think your ability to do that is rooted in two things. One, extreme compassion for the city and where we want to go as a group. And secondarily, just your overall love for being a servant leader within the community. And so I look at you and your bravery, and it's served as a role model for me now as a new, oncoming council member, just finishing my first term. So thank you very much for your mentorship and your leadership by example.
Thank you.
My turn. Well, Era, big congratulations on the completion of your many years of dedicated public service to Lake Forest. Your tireless commitment and generous spirit have helped carry forward the legacy of our extraordinary city. I never could have imagined, years ago, when you were my children's orthodontist, that our paths would cross again in such a meaningful way. It's been an honor to serve alongside you this past year on the City Council, representing Ward Three. Lake Forest has been truly fortunate to have your leadership. Through your unwavering devotion, you've not only strengthened our community, you've made it safer. Your determination in securing a fire and rescue boat for our fire department is just one example of the lasting impact of your service. It has quite literally helped save lives in our community, thanks to you. Thank you, Era, for your countless contributions to our city, for your service to the people who call Lake Forest home, and for the personal support you've shown me. Congratulations, and with deep gratitude, thank you.
Era, you have three minutes.
I'm going to start out, I'm going to start out with a lie.
You say three?
I'm going to start out with a lie. I'll keep it brief. You know, first off, thank you all for your comments. They're very kind, very sweet. You know, I have enjoyed my time on council. They say the two happiest days in a boat owner's life is the day that they buy the boat and they sell the boat. That couldn't be further from the truth here. I came on council with a level of trepidation, knowing that we had been through an upheaval, and I was a little worried. And I think we all grow into our roles, and I'm leaving knowing that we're in extremely, extremely capable hands, you eight that are up here. And then I know that Nick, when he steps up here, is going to rise to the occasion and do a wonderful job. But I do leave with a level of sadness because this is truly enjoyable. And I think service is probably one of the most important things any of us can do. I just want to start out with some general thanks. First off, I have to thank my wife, Christine, for being so patient with me, being so giving of her time, and allowing me to pursue this for the community that I love, and my daughters, Grace, Clara, Lily, and Caroline. Next, I do want to thank the Lake Forest Caucus. As Pete pointed out, that was not my first experience with the caucus. My very first experience with the caucus was before I even went on the caucus. And I was asked if I would interview for BRB, Building Review Board. Now, what in God's green earth an orthodontist needs to do on the Building Review Board, I have no idea. But I interviewed, and I was denied. And I thought, well, that's just the way it goes. This is, this is a process here, right? And if you want to embrace the city and city governance, you have to realize that the caucus has a purpose and a function, and almost all the time, 99 and a half percent out of 100, they do a great job. My experience went a little bit further. I served on the caucus for three years, and I served with Pete. I served with Eileen. Was anybody else on caucus when I was on caucus? But it really allowed me to learn more and the value in the caucus system. And I know it has its detractors, but it really does educate the community, and I would strongly encourage any and all who are interested to pursue that experience. And as Pete had recited, I interviewed at the same time with Jim Preschleck. Quite honestly, the best man won. Jim Preschleck was undeniably a far more qualified individual than me. And when he was nominated, the only thing I could do was pick up the phone and say, congratulations, I'm excited for you, how can I help? It's never good to say this is the way people should act or behave, you know, follow my lead, but I really do think in the city of Lake Forest, that is the appropriate response. When the caucus vets all the candidates, I think generally speaking, a committee of 43 usually makes the right choice. And I know in my situation it is, and I think, I think that has held true prior to that and then moving forward. I have a great deal of trust in the caucus. I do want to thank the residents of the Third Ward. I had a lot of interaction with, they were always polite and cordial with every interaction, and it was very much a positive experience. And then I do want to thank staff. Now, I don't want to go through all of my experiences with staff. I've been reaching out and talking with them individually. I don't want to embarrass anybody, and God forbid, I don't want to forget somebody. So I just do want to throw out a blanket thank you to the staff. I think they are incredibly professional. They're as dedicated to the city as anybody could possibly be. As far as the folks I've served with, top of the list, I have to thank Judd Morris, a former Ward One alderperson. Judd was a finance chair, and Judd was very giving of his time. And my definition of Judd, the descriptive I use, was Judd was a true gentleman. Judd and I still interact, and I'm eternally thankful for my experience with Judd Morris. He still continues to this day contributing. You may laugh, but I don't. Ray Bushman. Occasionally, Ray and I disagreed, more often than not. And Ray was always happy to, he would always say, I'm happy to discuss. Our interaction has carried beyond our joint tenure on City Council. And although Ray and I often disagreed, Ray was, Ray was always very cordial with me. And Ray, I doubt you're paying any attention, but I want to thank you for offering me different perspectives. You would get me going at times, my face would get red, but there was value in that. And being pushed on your decisions, I think, adds value to any discussion. Jim Preschleck, I can't say enough about Jim. Caucus member, Historic Preservation Commission, HPC Chair, co-alderman, ongoing dialogue. Jim and I talk regularly. He wanted to know my viewpoints, and I shared with him, I asked him of what his were. But most importantly, the thing that really struck me about Jim Preschleck is Jim was an institutionalist, and I do believe in this institution. And I think in a time when people are willing to tear down institutions, I think we have to stand up for those institutions. And I believe firmly that Jim imprinted on me the strong belief that the caucus and what we have in place here in Lake Forest is important. Former alderman Jack Reisenberg, I stepped into his seat. Jack was very kind, offering up time to me, advice and supporting me. Tim Newman, similarly. Former mayor Rob Lansing, Rob was terming off, and Rob took a lot of time with me to coach me in terms of what this role was going to be like. And I want to thank former mayor Lansing. And then I am going to mention former staff member Sally Swarthout, Elizabeth Hollab, Carl Waldorf, Pete Seibert. They made a real impression on me. Institutions, the Lake Forest Caucus, the 43, it's served this community well for over 90 years. I would strongly endorse anybody that the caucus brings forward just based on their work. The institutions of Historic Preservation, the preservationists hold a vital and key role in our community, and I think we always need to be willing to engage them and talk with them. Gordon Community Center, Croya, Lake Forest Hospital, the academic institutions, Open Lands. I think about all of these institutions that makes Lake Forest a special place. These are all volunteer. I am going to do a special shout-out to some people that I had never met, but this institution has been in town for over 100 years. They're behind us on the church parking lot. My friends at the First Baptist Church. I was invited by them a couple years ago to come to one of their events with Pastor Todd Fletcher. And I have to be honest with you, living here my whole life, riding my bicycle past that church, driving past that church, walking past that church, it didn't dawn on me that it was really there. And it's part of who we are as Lake Forest. And it's part of who we are as Lake Forest. I was incredibly thankful to have met Pastor Todd and, and all of his congregation. They're an important part of this community. Now, I do want to say, alternative perspectives, Lake Forest for Transparency, the podcast guys, Parents Care, and all the other localized action groups. I may not agree with you, but I applaud your interaction, and I would encourage you to continue to engage. You push us to do a better job. You push us to justify our actions and rationalize our decisions based on the best long-term interests of the community. We may not agree on certain issues, but you pay a vital, you play a vital role in this democracy. So I would, I would encourage you, moving forward, keep doing what you're doing. It's very important. You'll make us a better body and a better community for, for challenging this institution. Indeed, Pete, you had mentioned it before, Joanne Desmond. Joanne Desmond was a member of, were they the Action Group? I can't remember what the group was, but they were a group that was motivated against the Third Rail. And I watched those council meetings when Dr. Desmond and, and some of her neighbors railed, just railed on then Alderman Tac, then Alderman Reisenberg, then Mayor Lansing. And it was, it was a pretty, pretty harsh thing to watch. And Joanne believed in, in the system, and, and she wasn't selected, and she ran against We had what I thought was a very fair competition, and the outcome of that election was in my favor. But what I got out of that was six years of interaction with Dr. Desmond. Joanne and I probably speak regularly, I want to say once every three or four months. And I think in this day and age, it's critically important to engage people who we don't necessarily agree with or political opponents. I would consider Joanne a friend. We still don't agree on, on several things, but I respect her and she respects my opinion. And the one thing that I got out of that election, other than the privilege and the honor to serve, was getting to know somebody in this community who has a lot to offer that I never would have met otherwise. So I want to thank Joanne for doing this. And by the way, she didn't tune out. She's a member of the library board, and she's a doer. So I applaud her for her continued engagement. Now I want to talk about the mayor, Mayor Tac. I didn't want to go through all eight of us because I've already taken too much of my time, but I want to thank you for the trust that you bestowed upon me, specifically for being chairman of the Public Works Committee in the last two years. I do want to thank you for your open-mindedness and your tolerance of me. What the mayor is referencing is a few issues in, in executive session, but Randy listened to me vent, and I can assure you that he and I came at things from different perspectives. And I let him know so. Randy was always patient with me. And Mayor, I can't imagine a better person sitting in the chair to my right, to my right right now than you. I think you've been an excellent leader. I've been very pleased with everything you've done. And although we will still occasionally disagree, you're willing to listen to my thoughts, and I'm always willing to listen to yours. So thank you. I think you've been an excellent mayor. And then finally, I just want to leave with these final thoughts. I do feel very comfortable with the decisions that this council and the previous councils I've sat with have made. Always measuring change, not in years, but rather in decades. And I think that's how we have to look at this. I sincerely believe that the city is in a better place now than it was six short years ago, and I do believe we're in an upward trajectory. So I'm very comfortable, very happy on some level, stepping back and, and having Nick take this chair. I think he's going to do a fantastic job, and I want to thank you all for being tolerant and being so well. So thank you very much.
Anyway, okay, that concludes this particular meeting, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn and just say that we're going to take a very brief break between meetings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are done.
Thank you.